Maybe it will give you better information. The piece, uh, the Pacific Coast Highway, uh, is, uh, I'm told, uh, closed. Uh, it, well, it's available with an ID that shows your resident from Mulholland down to Grandview Drive, south of Grand divided to, uh, PCH. I'm told it's closed. Uh, the evacuation area is, uh, south of Saddleback Peak Road and east of Topanga Canyon. Uh, I'm told that we've lost completely about thirty structures in the canyon and, uh, some others have been damaged. We've got a red flag warning in effect till ten AM Friday. Um, in order to, there are two things that people are very anxious to do. One is find out when they can go back to their home. And the other is to get and evaluate, if they can't go back to their home, at least find out how their home is doing. You go to, uh, CAL Fire Incidents, uh, dot Palisades, Google that, and you'll be on a website that will allow you to put in your address and determine, uh, whether or not you're in one of three areas. Completely open with perhaps a warning because, uh, you should be cautious, uh, versus resident only versus completely closed. You, uh, uh, can also at that website type in your address and see, uh, whether they've inspected it. They've inspected almost all and, uh, it'll tell you, uh, to what extent the structure's been, uh, destroyed. You can also put in other addresses. A lot of people are concerned about their safe deposit boxes. Uh, you put in your bank's address, you can at least see whether the bank building is fine. If it's fine, the vault is fine, even if it's not fine, the vault is probably fine. I was up in the Palisades and quite a number of the branches are just fine. And then I saw one where the whole bank branches burned down, but you can see the vault, uh, uh, right there, uh, looks like it's, uh, hasn't been, uh, damaged. Um, taxation, a lot of people have been, have owned their homes for a long time, uh, and have a very low Prop thirteen value. Uh, under proposition thirteen, you get reassessed if you do new construction, but if what you do is just build back what you had before, maybe a little bigger, uh, you keep your old low property tax, uh, valuation. Uh, on, yeah, income taxation, uh, the IRS has taken the extraordinary step of telling everyone in LA County, many of whom are really not affected by these fires, that they've got October fifteenth is the new deadline for any payments or any filings of income taxes. Um, if you have a casualty loss, you deduct it as a, as an itemized deduction, uh, on Schedule A, and you get a choice. You can put on your two thousand and twenty-four tax return or your two thousand and twenty-five tax return. Uh, I know the incident, of course, happened in two thousand and twenty-five, but you can do the prior year and there, uh, and hopefully increase your, um, your refund, uh, just at a time, uh, when you need it. Um, I, as I'll get to in a second, there will be some federal grants. Whatever grant money you get is ta- income tax free. Um, and then finally, if you do get a big insurance, uh, settlement, um, it is highly unlikely to be taxed, um, even if it exceeds, uh, but if it exceeds what you, your basis in the house, which is everything you paid to buy your house and prove your house and put stuff in your house, uh, then, uh, in theory, you've got a capital gain, but there are three or four different ways in which that gain is, uh, unlikely to be taxed. Um, FEMA, as I said, very generous to the governmental entities, but if you don't have insurance, and obviously, uh, fire insurance is the number one source of funds to rebuild a burned home. I- if you're underinsured, you can, uh, you're eligible for the following from FEMA. Uh, forty-three thousand, six hundred dollars toward building your home again, uh, or, or even if you're selling and leaving, forty-three thousand, uh, six hundred toward real property damage that isn't covered by insurance. Another forty-three thousand, six hundred to cover your personal property damages that are uninsured. That includes your medical costs if they're uninsured. It includes your car if uninsured, includes, uh, the, uh, the contents of your home. Um, and then if you're qualify for those, you get an extra ten thousand dollars in grant from the state. Now, on the one hand, that's real money. It can add up to ninety-seven thousand dollars. Oh, and also when you register for FEMA, uh, and, and you gotta register within sixty days. I'll be hammering that message out, uh, uh, soon as we approach, uh, the deadline. You wanna go to the FEMA website and register, uh, uh, it, once you register with FEMA, they send you seven hundred and seventy dollars to deal with, uh, immediate needs. Um, when you register with FEMA up until, um, a few days ago, they were sending out a misleading letter. Uh, the letter basically said, "You're denied." What the letter meant to say and what it says now, uh, is, "We can't give you any significant money until you tell us more about your insurance coverage." Um, and so they've had that misleading letter up for the last umpteen disasters. I had five calls, uh, with the outgoing head, well, I guess she's no longer head of FEMA, uh, but she was the national director to finally get that, uh, fixed. Uh, but still ninety-seven thousand dollars is not enough to rebuild a substantially burned home to, if, if it's significantly uninsured. Another source of funds is the SBA. Uh, the Small Business Administration will loan you money for homeowners, five hundred thousand for uninsured, uh, losses to your structure, one hundred thousand toward your personal property, including cars, four percent or lower interest rate, and, uh, twelve months, first twelve months, you don't have to make any payments. Uh, if you're a business, and I know a number of businesses have been affected, uh, you're gonna be helped by those, uh, uh, the, 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 the tax rules that defer, uh, making those estimated tax payments, et cetera. Uh, you can also borrow up to two million dollars from the SBA. For most businesses, the rate will be four percent or less. Some will be paying more. Um, you get that four percent rate if your business wouldn't qualify for a bank loan. You, the, the federal government wants you to borrow from the bank, uh, if you can. Uh, most small businesses under this, uh, situation can't. So you get, um, and, and those loans are running about four percent, up to two million dollars to cover both the physical loss and the economic injury, particularly lost sales. Um, I, my, I, I'm here fighting for more, and that will require, uh, extraordinary congressional action. It's done in some disasters, not others, and there's a substantial current, uh, here in Washington to be anti-California on the one hand and anti-spending on the other hand. So I'm up against that kind of headwinds. Um, one thing that I, the, uh, that I think speaks well for California is that when you build back, you have to build back better. We have a new fire code for fire-prone areas, and I believe all of Topanga will fit into that. I know the, the Palisades does. And, uh, this require, this, uh, new fire code is applicable to fire-prone construction area, fire, construction, fire-prone areas where, where the building is after two thousand and eight. So most of your homes, uh, did not meet this standard. Thank God, the number of homes we lost in Topanga was modest compared to, uh, uh, the Palisades, uh, but if you rebuild, you have to build according to this, uh, higher standard. Now, this higher standard, we don't know how well it worked in the Palisades fire, but we do know in the, in the, in the Paradise fire in Northern California, fifty-eight percent of the homes to the new standard survived, only eighteen percent of those that, uh, did not meet the new standard survived. Uh, we expect, uh, some light rain on Sunday. I hope it's just enough to help the firefighters and not enough to cause, uh, uh, landslides. They're bringing in crews to deal with landslide issues and to try to, uh, prevent landslides. Passports, um, we got, uh, the, uh, the State Department to open up their passport office, and they are also, along with sixty-one other agencies, including my, uh, 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 office, they're at the West, at, uh, what's being described as the UCLA, um, Disaster Center. Uh, it's not at UCLA. It's two miles south of UCLA on Pico in the old West Side Pavilion, uh, uh, but you've got, they're open from nine in the morning till eight at night, and, uh, sixty-one different agencies, including now, um, the State Department and passports. If however you need a passport in the next few weeks, an emergency appointment, you need to call our office. Uh, Scott Abrams, my, uh, chief of staff is on the phone. You'll reach him and others at eight one eight, five oh one, ninety-two hundred. So, um, that's a lot of material, and there are a whole bunch of complexities I didn't get a chance to deal with. I'll take a question or two. I'm on East Coast time, so I'm gonna beg off after I answer a question or two. I am flying, uh, late tomorrow night, uh, to be in, uh, in the area, uh, starting, uh, Friday morning and for, uh, about eleven, twelve days. So, uh, look forward to being involved and doing all I can, uh, and, uh, both to make sure that people get what they're entitled to under current law and that we try to pass, uh, a statute with, uh, a, a new law, uh, that, uh, provides people with more assets, especially to build back.
Thanks. All right. Perfect. Wow, thank you. That was a wealth of information. I really appreciate, like, a really great primer on everything, like, I've seen on the SBA offer, so thank you for that. I also really liked what you said about all the work that needs to be done in terms of budgets and bills and whatnot. So I'll just put this out here as something I'm wondering if you're kind of mulling over. Reinsurance is one of the sort of tripping points here in California when it comes to insurance, getting insurance in general and the cost of that, and sort of what we could do for insurance carriers to kind of provide a backstop so maybe they can keep rates more in check. I know that former Congressman, now Senator Schiff, um, has introduced something called the Insure Act. He introduced that last year. So basically, what I'm wondering is, have you had a chance to look at the Insure Act? And do you think that's something we might be able to push forward at the federal level, given that other states like Florida, red states, also are having a terrible insurance problem and they can't get coverage for their constituents?
I support Adam's effort. Maxine Waters and I have an effort at the, uh, uh, in the House that's a, a little bit more modest. It requires a GEO study of what we can do in this area, uh, kind of to galvanize support. Uh, there is an area where the federal government does provide insurance, uh, directly in the market, and that is flood insurance. And I can turn to my colleagues from places like Florida and Louisiana, including Louisiana, all the Republican leadership in the House is all from Louisiana, and say that I've supported, uh, the flood insurance program, uh, to help, uh, people, uh, stay in their homes, et cetera, uh, even though, let's face it, Los Angeles is the most important city in the world built in a desert, and we're experiencing a drought. Uh, but, uh, I've supported, uh, these efforts, and I'd like to see my colleagues to support, uh, similar efforts. We also need to reduce the risk because ultimately, uh, insurance companies need to be compensated for the risk they're taking, and you can't just mandate, say, "Hey, I wanna pay a hundred a month in insurance and I want all this coverage under all these dangers." And, uh, there's a lot we can do, especially making sure that within five feet of your home, in every direction, uh, there's nothing that's fl- uh, flammable. Uh, I mean, I've learned a lot about fires just in the last two weeks. I always thought that a, a flower box outside your window was a great idea, and now I've discovered it's a really bad idea. So, um, we've gotta reduce the risk, we've gotta spread the risk, we've gotta make sure that there aren't outrageous profits, uh, uh, reaped by those who are shouldering the risk, uh, and, uh, uh, all of these, uh, things need to be done because the people need insurance, and it's in the federal government's interest. I just laid out all the money that's available to those who are uninsured or underinsured. In a perfect world, everybody would be fully insured, and the federal government wouldn't have to write these checks, not the che- not the smaller checks that are available under current law, and I wouldn't have, and I, and I wouldn't be fighting for bigger checks. So it is in the government's interest that everybody get, uh, this insurance and that we make it, uh, make it affordable. Um, and, uh, we saw many, is several thousand non-renewals in the Palisades, and I'm sure you had some in Topanga as well, just in the couple of years, uh, before, uh, before this fire.
Thank you. Okay. Um, okay. All right. So, okay, so this is great. I have to say, thank you. Really fabulous answers to my questions. Thank you. I super appreciate that, and we will be reaching back out. In fact, it was so great, we're gonna have to come back and pester you again for more insight and more help. I really appreciate it, Congressman Sherman. I just really, it, it makes me very humbled to know how much you care about the community, and you're coming here tonight. Thank you.
Visit the Disaster Resources Center on Pico or, and call, never hesitate to call our office, eight one eight, five oh one, ninety-two hundred. Thank you very much.
Bye. Bye. All right. Perfect. Well, without further ado, um, I have great honor to introduce our extremely responsive, I would say, most responsive ever, most hands-on, transparent, accountable, competent as all get out, compassionate and pretty darn special supervisor, Ms., Supervisor Lindsay Orba.
That's incredibly kind, Carrie. Thank you so much. I am, uh, just really grateful to be able to be in this space with you tonight after you all have been through so much over these past couple of weeks, and it has been a Herculean effort that has required a team that is second to none, and I am grateful, uh, for your partnership through the Topanga Town Council, uh, One Topanga and the communication that you've been able to put out, um, the team, uh, TCEP and all the folks on the ground here who have been prioritizing safety, uh, for the Topanga community, and, um, just cannot thank you enough for the partnership. I see our friends, uh, Captain C Two, I see, uh, Drew Smith is on here as well, and, and so many others, um, who have been, uh, partners with us in helping to prepare to meet this moment, and so I thank you for all the work that you do, uh, to keep people informed because that is what, uh, kept so many people safe during this incredibly difficult time. Um, we know that there ha- there has been devastating impact and, and, um, I adjourned yesterday and in memory of Arthur Semenow, and I know that there has been loss of life in the Topanga, uh, commu- community, um, as a result of these fires, so I, um, that is not lost on me either, and I'm incredibly heartbroken, uh, for the losses that have been suffered and, uh, my sincere condolences to the family and community members who have lost so much, including family members, um, during this very difficult time. Um, we at the county are working to support people, whether you are still in a state of shock or you are ready to, uh, rebuild and recover and everything in between. So to give you a, a little bit of where we're at, um, in terms of the phases of recovery, uh, this is what we hear a lot about. So Phase One will be led, uh, on the ground by EPA. It's happening right now. Um, there is, um, household hazardous waste cleanup. The EPA has invested a hundred million dollars and more than five hundred personnel on the ground to do this Phase One. Um, there is no requirement on your part to opt into it. It is automatically happening at no cost to you, and, um, we are working, uh, in a lead role at the county, coordinating with our state and federal partners, uh, on, on this, uh, process of cleanup and this, uh, critical first phase of the hazardous household waste. The second phase is, is, uh, where you have some options. You don't have an option of whether to do it, you just have the option of how to do it. And so you have one of two options. You can either opt into, um, the service that will be provided by the government, uh, by, uh, led by us in the county in partnership with the Army Corps of Engineers. You can, uh, give them access to your property and they will come in and do the fire debris removal, or you can hire a private contractor, uh, to do it for you to your specifications, but you still have to meet all of, uh, the rules outlined by Public Health and, uh, you know, all of the other governmental agencies, uh, on the, on the fire debris removal. So I know that some of you who have experience with past fires want to, um, hire your own contractor, which you have the right to do, but you don't have the right to not take this action, and so I just wanna be really clear about that. And it's because, uh, we are prioritizing public health. This debris does need to be cleared out. It needs to be done so safely, and it's, uh, for the continued public health of, of you and your neighbors. Right now, there are very difficult environmental conditions that we're facing. The air quality is bad, um, there are risks, uh, with the debris that is out there, and so I know everyone, uh, who didn't evacuate, uh, is eager to come home. I will very strongly caution you, though, if, if you can take the time, um, to wait, there are, you know, a- as a result of these fires, a lot of dangerous conditions on the ground. We are, uh, providing PPE for people who come, uh, who are coming back home, and we strongly encourage you to use that PPE, um, if you are in those burn-affected areas. Um, there is a wind-blown dust and ash advisory, which also, uh, impacts, um, the air, among other things, and especially if you have kids or older adults, um, in your household, they are particularly at risk for health impacts from these conditions. Um, so we strongly advise wearing masks, gloves, all of, all of the PPE that we provide. Um, for more information specifically on how debris removal is going to happen, because I know there are lots of very specific questions around this, we are hosting a town hall on Sunday from three to five PM, uh, and we are working to, uh, make sure that everyone has all of their questions answered. Um, I know that there's, uh, this has been the, a, a leading topic for people, and we will have all of our relevant partners there, uh, to talk about exactly, uh, step by step how this is happening and who you need to call for what. Um, but if you do have questions between now and Sunday, um, whether because we are now facing the possibility of precipitation and you have concerns about mud flow, you can call, uh, eight hundred, nine three three, zero nine three zero, and I will say that, um, we in the county are leading, we're establishing K-Rail and, uh, working on, uh, distributing sandbags and other, um, mitigation efforts to address any potential impact from the rain this weekend. Um, but I, I do know that is a concern. We're going property by property to assess, um, if, if properties are at risk. If you have questions about that, you can call that number. Um, if you have questions about debris removal between now and Sunday, you can also call eight four four, three four seven, three three, three two. That's a hotline all about debris removal. Um, and, uh, we strongly encourage you to come to the town hall. Our, our, your relevant, um, legislative, uh, state and federal partners will be, um, all in participation, so we're all gonna be there for you and make sure that we're holding your hand every step of the way. Um, and as, uh, the Congressman mentioned, of course, the Disaster Recovery Center is available for those who would like to visit it. I know it's at the West Side Pavilion, so it's a location that's not as close to Topanga, um, but, um, but it is a one-stop shop. I've had residents who have told me, you know, "I didn't think it was for me, I just thought it was for people who needed more help than me." Uh, but when I went, I realized that the past few days that I spent working on recovery, I could've just gone here and in a couple of hours gotten it all done. So there is a lot to offer. If you, uh, can make the trip, um, it is, uh, a valuable site to visit, and it is open every day from nine AM to eight PM. Uh, we are also, um, the lead agency on, uh, on debris removal, not only, uh, in the capacity of, um, our, our, uh, flood control district, which of course is, is county, uh, territory, so the storm drains and all, uh, and all of our water infrastructure, but we are also the, the lead agency on all of the roadways and, and road clearing, and we're going to do that not only for the Topanga community, but also, uh, the incorporated cities around. So, um, we just wanna have it so there's, we're not tripping over ourselves, uh, in terms of government bureaucracy. We have a lead agency in the county. We're coordinating all of those efforts and making sure that we're moving quickly, 'cause I know, uh, people are concerned about, um, how we, how we do this work. We've set up nine specialized task forces, one on debris management, watershed recovery, rebuilding, schools, health and social services, cultural and natural resources, and long-term recovery, and each of these task forces are focused on that subject matter expertise. So I know how deep into the details you all like to get, so we can make sure that you are in contact with the requisite, um, task force, um, that is, um, on your favorite topic to make sure you are getting all of the detailed information that you like. Um, yesterday at our board meeting, we, um, established some renter protections for people who take in people or pets. Um, while, uh, people are looking to, uh, rebuild, they need to be somewhere, and if you are a renter taking people or pets in, um, who are displaced from these fires, you will not, that, you will not be subject to eviction for doing so. Um, we also have adjusted our short-term rental laws, um, to allow those who have been impacted by the fires and those who are doing work to restore communities, um, from the impacts of the fires, uh, to have a little bit more flexibility on housing options, um, but it is restricted to those two groups of people. Um, we did a motion directing the county to secure additional state and federal resources, and as you heard from the Congressman, he's hard at work on that. And we also, um, co-authored a motion on, uh, accountability and sort of our after-action in terms of, uh, and we've, we will, uh, be hiring a third-party, uh, administrator to, um, to actually conduct this assessment, because we want every question to be answered. You know, we always wanna learn from these events so we can do better in the future. Um, I know repopulation has been a significant topic for, for the community, and, um, and you've been getting those repopulation updates every day at noon. Um, you know to go to protect dot genesis dot com, or you can go to recovery dot LA county dot gov to see that map of where is being repopulated, uh, and if you have any questions about that. And, um, I, I will also say, um, you know, at our Disaster Recovery Center, we have, uh, support if you've lost your prescriptions, if you need mental health support, because this is incredibly traumatic. Um, you know, if you need help talking to your kids, there are professionals who can help you with that. We want every parent, every family member, every member of this community to have the support that you need, uh, to get back to normal as quickly as possible, to rebuild if you need to, but to make sure that the Topanga community that you know and love, uh, continues to thrive and has all of the supports that you need and that you truly deserve in this time of crisis. And I've heard, you know, uh, "Well, once the cameras go away, what, what's gonna happen?" And I know that there were concerns early on when you didn't see the aerial aircraft, you know, dropping the, you know, dropping the water because of the winds, um, that maybe, uh, you were not being thought about, but I can tell you, Topanga has been close to us every step of the way. We are focused on making sure that we're taking care of Topanga, and we are going to be here for you until the recovery is finished, until you have every bit of support that you need and deserve. So thank you for inviting me tonight, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Perfect. Um, I gotta say, I forgot in my superlatives to mention that you are also among the hardest working people I've ever met, so thank you for all that. It's so much, I think I need to process it, but I would just quickly say, please tell us and reach out to us and let us know what we can do to help you push all of these great initiatives forward. If Sophia could go ahead, she maybe already had, send us that information for Sunday so we can push it out to the community, the town hall and debris removal. That'd be great, yeah. And seriously, just, you know, I was gonna say, don't be a stranger, but you sure as heck haven't. I just want people to know that when Supervisor Horvath came out to visit Topanga, and she's been out probably at least twenty times since she's been in office, when she came out recently to visit the community after the fires, she made it a priority among her stops to visit the turtles. So she understands Topanga, she gets it, and she cares about these issues herself deeply. So I just want you to know that. Um, okay, there's so much good stuff that I wanna make sure that we can get to it, so I wanna say thank you Supervisor Horvath, and you can stay on for the whole meeting if you want. You're welcome anytime.
Thank you so much, Carrie, and thanks to the whole community. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, so we, next up on the agenda, we, I believe Nick Malvoon has not made it on yet to updates of the school, so we will incorporate him later if he'd be able to join. So we will jump to our next speaker, who will be Sam Liu from Senator Ben Allen's office. Sam, are you out there?
I hope. Yes.
Fabulous. Okay, we hear you.
All right. Hey, everyone, I'll be really short, um, especially since the two prior speakers were, were just, were so wonderful and had a lot of information. Um, I wanna reiterate that the Disaster Recovery Center that was mentioned at the old West Side Pavilion is actually gonna be open indefinitely, at least through the end of the month, so definitely take advantage. And I believe there's gonna be a smaller resource fair this weekend at the Topanga Community Center from eleven to four, so that's even closer, so take advantage of that. Um, in the evening from four to six PM on Saturday is a town hall for the community of Malibu, but a lot of these speakers will be, um, present at that town hall at Malibu High, so I encourage people to go from Topanga since that's not geographically too far, um, and it'll also be livestreamed, and then like Supervisor Horvath mentioned, on Sunday, there will be a debris removal town hall at Santa Monica College from three to five PM. Um, next month, Senator Allen will be at the Topanga Town Council meeting with Assembly Member Jackie Irwin to talk about the legislation that the state is, um, looking at to, uh, looking into to, um, address the fire and the fire recovery, as well as any kind of budget actions that can be taken by the state, so we can update everyone on that next month. But, um, and the last thing is, um, I'm working with Carrie to get a Fair Plan rep to a future town council meeting or a dedicated town council meeting, uh, 'cause I know that that's of because I know that that's of major concern. But the Department of Insurance should be tabling this Saturday at the Topanga Community Center. So definitely speak, come by and bring your paperwork and make an appointment there. And I think that's it. I think the other speakers covered everything. I'm happy to stand for the whole meeting and take questions, too.
Sam, thank you so much, yeah. And I just want people to know, Sam has really been one of those people who consistently is really trying to get issues to the table, especially about things like insurance. He's been very active on that front, and that is no small feat. Now, you know, we were speaking before this meeting about the one silver lining and all this, perhaps might be that maybe now we can actually get some action, you know? But it's unfortunate that it takes a crisis to make some of these bureaucrats, you know, get moving and do the stuff that needs to be done. But anyway, I want to thank him for his help. Thank you. Okay, all right, moving on to FEMA. Let's get our federal aid reps on. I wanted to just introduce for a moment, Hallie, I don't know if she'll be speaking. I don't, you know, I've been setting this up with her, and she has been a tremendous asset in organizing the FEMA presentation. And I just really thank the world of her. So I want to do a shout out to Hallie. If you need help from FEMA, I recommend Hallie. But Hallie, your team is also on, so we will turn it over to you, too, to give us your presentation, and then we will bring in some audience questions.
Carrie, thank you, and thank you for the invitation and the participants who joined tonight. We really appreciate this, although it's an unfortunate circumstances we're meeting. Glad to be speaking with you tonight. So I'll turn the floor first over to my colleague with the Individual Assistance Team, Danielle Hill. And then we'll go to Bob Troy with Cal OES for a quick update and some from the state's perspective. Danielle?
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for inviting me to this table. I'm here representing the Individual Assistance Program area. And I have to say Senator Sherman's presentation about how the flow of how FEMA works within that collective of sequence delivery was awesome. So I just want to reiterate that process so we understand how the constituents of that community are going to work their way through the process and interact with FEMA all throughout this time as they go through the recovery. Definitely, as the incident stands up, we want to make sure all immediate needs are taken care of by our first responders and our voluntary agencies that are there to take care of your basic needs and your sheltering. Then we go into, if you have insurance, purchase protection. We want to reiterate the importance of making that first contact, making sure your insurance company is aware of what your needs are. If there's any needs of any type of additional living expenses, reach out to that insurance provider and let them know that you have been affected. If there are any delays in that insurance process, you want to make sure to reach out to that insurance company first. Then make sure to let your FEMA representatives know by contacting us if that has been an extended delay. We might be able to provide additional assistance in between those times if there is an extended delay with no contact with your insurance company. So we definitely do then step forward after the insurance has taken their reins and provided all the assistance that can be provided under that insurance policy to see if there is any additional needs that that family might have. And that can come in multiple categories, as the senator mentioned. We have the housing assistance category, which is going to address the home repair of the structure that was damaged. It's also going to address your temporary housing needs in many ways. There might be survivors or citizens that have been living in hotels at this time, and they've incurred expenses that are not covered by insurances. We can, under our grant program, look at trying to reimburse for those expenses that have been incurred if you were staying in a hotel. That's a lodging expense reimbursement. We have assistance once the property has been inspected by our inspectors to then, once it's determined that the home is not habitable or you're not able to get there, we can provide assistance toward temporary rentals somewhere. Now, that type of assistance can be provided over a length of period of time. Even though the maximums were brought up in this presentation, just understand, the program does not walk away from families that need our assistance and still meet the eligibility criteria for continued temporary housing. So that's on the housing assistance side. You're looking at those main categories of how do I get my home repaired? How do I deal with living somewhere else while I'm doing the home repair? And how do I address any housing, any type of living expenses that I've incurred in hotels while I'm dealing with this process? These are all subcategories under that housing assistance area. Now, as you move over to our other assistance area, there's a lot of categories that survivors can receive assistance on. The most thing that people talk about is their contents or their personal items that were stored in the home. The grant program, even though it's not an insurance company and it's not even our best recovery partner, SBA, we do have the ability to provide assistance towards your basic items that were lost in that structure, just enough to get things started, just enough to get you back on your feet and get you back in a functional place. So that's the personal items that are looked at on that other needs assistance area. Outside of your personal items, we provide assistance for lost transportation vehicles. We know a lot of survivors might have lost their actual vehicle in this event. So if you are not covered by comprehensive insurance and you are a vehicle that is legally on the road and being operated properly, that is a form of assistance that may be provided to folks. And then we have the incurred expenses along with your medical, dental, and any miscellaneous purchases that you might have been incurring in regards to chainsaws. Maybe you started your own cleanup as you were dealing with the Santa Ana winds and the debris that might have been on your property. So those types of expenses that you incurred after the disaster are things that you can potentially receive assistance on trying to offset some of those costs, okay? Now, looking past FEMA, even though we know that FEMA provides a lot of assistance and we try to make sure everyone gets a good footing as they move into this new realm of recovery, I have to definitely tout on the fact that our strongest recovery partner, especially for homeowners and for those renters that want their stuff right now, because I don't want to have to wait years and years to repopulate all my things, is the importance of involvement with SBA. And making sure, if you have insurance, maximize the eligibility with that insurance company, file a registration with FEMA and maximize the eligibility that we have within our grant program. And then make sure you apply for SBA and understand how SBA is a partner in this recovery piece. And they can provide additional assistance that will allow you to recover faster, get back things that FEMA does not cover and things that may not be insured by your insurance company. So it's really important. And the greatest thing is, they all have application periods at the same time, okay? So once you've completed the FEMA registration, just go ahead and do that next step over. As the senator mentioned, go to that recovery center and speak with SBA and start that process so you understand what it is. They have a website, we have a website. Get it all done at once. Once you've hit all of those target areas and you've maximized the eligibility with the federal partners and with your insurance company, with the loan opportunities that are out there, then we, as the sequence of delivery identifies, there's always going to be unmet needs. There's always going to be, unfortunately, resources and supplies that are still in need. We work diligently with our federal and long-term recovery groups to try to make sure we connect survivors that still have unmet needs with those long-term recovery groups so that they can help those survivors come back to the community and work amongst themselves to figure out the best way to address those unmet needs. So that is really the nuts and bolts of the recovery process, unfortunately, after a disaster like this happens. And the key thing always is to remember, it's a marathon and it's not a race. And you want to make sure to maximize every dollar that you can get within each of the programs that you could potentially get funding from because it is a way of putting this whole piece together, okay? I'd love to be open up for questions as we move forward. Thank you so much for inviting me.
Thank you, Danielle. That was great. Happy to chime in from the state perspective. I want to start and end, though, by echoing really the need to register for FEMA, to file a claim with your insurance company, provide that settlement and any other documentation to FEMA or FEMA partners. Unfortunately, one thing we learned in California is the overwhelming majority of fires survivors are underinsured. So United Policy Holders does 12- and 24-month surveys post fires. They did that for 2017, 2018, 2020. And on average, about 68% of people in California reported they ended up being underinsured. So even if you think you're adequately insured, there's a good likelihood that you're not. So don't miss the deadline to register. Please register, follow through on the process. It not only helps you potentially, but also your fellow survivors in California because if there's enough demonstrated need across the entire disaster, it can in turn open up some other additional types of assistance for Californians. So really help us to demonstrate the true unmet need for this disaster. It's immense. This is the costliest disaster, costliest fire in U.S. history. We want to make sure everybody gets all the assistance they can. But I'll start by also introducing myself, which I feel I do. I'm Robert Troy, Assistant Director for Energy Agency Recovery Coordination here at Cal OES. I really just want to say that the governor has, you know, really led a whole of government response to this. So every member of the state family working in firm partnership with our federal partners, supporting our local leadership there on the ground and supporting you. We arrived here on day one, and we will be here for a long, long time, as long as it takes. We not only have staff, state and family, or state and federal and local organizations, the Disaster Recovery Centers, which have already been mentioned. We've also mobilized state and federal partners to support the long-term recovery that's going to be needed for this event. So that is actively engaged and underway. We divide and structure recovery across six recovery capabilities, which I won't go into here, but the whole intent of the state, federal government is to, in accordance with the pre-existing structure, to be here in the long run to support Topanga, the entire community that's being affected by the Palisades Fire, but also the fire. And, you know, as we speak, there have been other fires, you know, both in Los Angeles and the region as well. We've organized across multiple task forces as well. Some of those are included but are not limited to schools, housing, debris, lithium ion batteries, watershed, et cetera. But we've also worked with our partners to open up some additional state funding, as was mentioned earlier, for folks that receive a maximum grant from FEMA Individual Assistance are then eligible for potentially up to an additional $10,000 from the California Department of Social Services through their state supplemental grant program. And there are a ton of other resources that are available. Really encourage you to go start with the DRC, continue your dialogue with FEMA. We'll be working with your local community leaders here for the long run. We'll be here for as long as it takes. So thank you for inviting us here tonight. Thank you for your time.
One second on the Cal OES. First of all, all of you, yeah, wow, what a tremendous amount of information you're delivering. Just one quick thing I wanted to ask you on the Cal OES debris removal front that Supervisor Horvath had mentioned. Do you, she was talking about the debris removal that was going to start soon. It was free. You just had to opt in. Can you explain a little bit, are you part of that program or is that an additional separate county program?
That's a great question. And so the governor requested that FEMA bring the federal family into conduct debris removal on this disaster. Sometimes the state takes that lead and seeks federal reimbursement. Because of the size and immensity of this disaster, other disasters that we're already working on, we worked with local leaders and made the determination that the best course of action here was to request that the federal family come in with strong state and local support. So what was referred to and described earlier as Phase One is being directly funded and provided by the federal government at the request of the governor. So we thank the president and FEMA for helping to make that happen. And then Phase Two, as was noted earlier, you have to opt into. It was perfectly described that you have to do it, you have to do it safely, but it's up to you whether you opt into it or not. The fine details of that program, and when it comes to, particularly when it comes to insurance, are still being worked out. There will be FAQs that will be coming out very shortly here in the next days and weeks. But what I will say tonight is that we are very intentional in how we structure those programs so that we leverage every available dollar, right? So we make the most use of insurance dollars and then state and federal dollars. So we have some good cost share adjustment right now from our federal partners. We'll continue to seek an adjustment and extension of that. And then we will backfill with state dollars wherever we can. Our whole goal is then to save local tax dollars, to be flexible and reprogram to support survivors there on the ground. So let us spend the state and federal dollars first and let the local communities then fill in some of those gaps.
Terrific. Would it be okay now for me to pass this over to my colleague, Alisa, our vice president, and let her ask a question or two?
Okay. That's okay? Okay. Thank you so much. This is Alisa Land. On behalf of some of our attendees who have asked questions that are relevant for FEMA, one question that came forward is, can you provide information on whether the EPA will be doing remediation for our region regarding air, water, and soil?
That's a great question. And so it really is a team effort, right? So we both have the U.S. EPA, but also California EPA, as well as air quality monitoring districts, CARB, et cetera, to ensure that these are safe operations. So we're assessing everything from air quality impacts from the current and most recent fires and actual debris, but also any impacts from the Phase One and Phase Two debris removal. We have two priorities. One, to do it quickly because we know that recovery can't begin until debris is gone. Number two, to do it safely, right? The last thing we want to do is to make things worse. So those are equal priorities in our mind, and we make sure that we have the right partners at the table to do that.
Okay, thank you so much. I had another question from one of our local insurance representatives regarding whether federal government funding may assist in covering debris removal. Will that apply to us here, federal assistance with that process? Did you already answer that?
Yeah.
If you did, that's great.
I think so, but did you want to add to that or reiterate it for anyone who might have missed it?
Yeah, like I said, the fine details are coming. I will say that when it comes to federal dollars and state dollars as well, we can't have a duplication of benefits, right? So if there is insurance, we have to make sure that we're not paying for something twice. That being said, as I mentioned earlier, we try and structure the program as flexibly as possible to maximize those insurance dollars. So if there are portions of the debris removal or related activities that we can't fund on the government side, then we can try and structure it so that you can use your insurance dollars to pay for those first, right? And so our goal is to keep you whole as much as possible.
That does seem really confusing, I have to say. I'm trying to wrap my head around that. Because I can understand, okay, federal money coming in, paying for a bunch of debris removal. But then when you, how do you sort of carve out which part the homeowner pays for? Oftentimes, insurance, food, landscape, I don't know, especially if you're on a Fair Plan or something. Yay, I don't know. Maybe they put it in a separate category. How long should we expect something like that would take to sort out?
We should have guidance in the very near future. A lot of it will depend on how your insurance policy is structured as well. But that's where we'll work to have those FAQs and have folks that you can talk to directly to get those answers.
Exactly. All right.
Can I ask another one? A resident in our area of Fernwood reported that she has been the victim of two attempts at FEMA fraud. Two individuals have applied for FEMA assistance in her name. Those individuals were paid. She has not made a claim or received anything. Can you comment about safeguards against FEMA fraud and what a resident can do to track this issue?
Well, what FEMA has within its system when people register is checks and balances to check on matching name versus social security number and EFT information, or independently running fraud flags. Outside of that, we allow survivors to notify us of, like she just found out, there is a registration in her name. We do also do duplication of benefit, I'm sorry, duplication checks if there are addresses in our system that come up as duplicate to something else. So we try our best to mitigate the fraud and identity theft that can happen within our system. But the best resource we have is survivors like she coming forward and saying, I didn't register for this, and notifying us so that we can stop the action once we're immediately notified.
All right, thank you so much. Another question of concern is, we've heard this on the news and from other sources, but if an individual puts out a GoFundMe or a similar request for assistance, we have been told that any ask may diminish their ability to obtain aid from FEMA or other government sources. Can you comment on that?
The key factor to always remember is, there is a restriction by law that if there are assistances provided for a specific category that that person is potentially eligible for, and we are made aware of it, we do have to take that into consideration. So the one thing I always like to share with survivors, the one requirement that we have to check is, we have to make sure that if you have insurance, that you notify us of the insurance settlement so that we can take that into consideration. Anything outside of that of the survivor, if they share it with us, we will move forward and take action on it. But we do have that requirement by law, just to make sure if it's specific and it's something that we cover. The example I give, if you get assistance specifically to replace a transportation vehicle that was lost, and we are notified that that is the type of assistance you receive, we then do have to take that into account when you are determined eligible for that type of assistance under the program.
I'll just chime in because maybe, you know, my FEMA partners don't want to say, maybe throw something at me for being maybe throw something at me for being wrong, but I'll just say, number one, FEMA does not have a unit to, you know, scroll social media looking for who's receiving types of crowd sourced assistance, number one. And I guess my advice would be, if you do, if you are seeking assistance, I would say keep those requests very general nature. Yes, if Bob Troy says, I'd like help replacing my vehicle that was burned up, and then I go to FEMA saying I need help for my vehicle, FEMA might come back and say, you can't get paid twice, right? So I would just say, use common sense. Don't be specific, general assistance, you know, just FEMA can't take it, but I'm going to say it's probably okay.
Okay, great. I have a question. This is a specific question that's impacting a lot of Topangan. So here's the situation. For a large number of people, the main costs they incurred during this disaster will be the accommodation, the hotel costs they had to incur when they were mandated to evacuate for about 10 days. So that amounted to a couple thousand dollars for many people. Many people don't have that to spare. So let me ask you this. Say you are one of these people who your only expense is the accommodation. You do have insurance, but you don't want to file a claim for that. Maybe your deductible is higher, or you're afraid of retaliatory cancellation. Can you not file anything with insurance and just go to FEMA and/or the SBA for aid? Is that forbidden or okay?
And I'll speak that the type of assistance that you're describing is a category that we have under our housing assistance area. It's called lodging expense reimbursement. And it does ask that if you have the insurance that will cover that type of expense, that we need to have you file with the insurance company, get a settlement and or denial of that said expense, and then you can submit any any outside expenses that weren't covered to FEMA for potential assistance on in addition to that. But it is something that if you would like to get some type of assistance on that type of expense, you need to file for your through your insurance first.
And if I can add on and ask Daniel to clarify. So that's absolutely the case for whether it is for displacement assistance or other types of other individual assistance, but the serious needs assistance does not require an insurance, correct, right? So it might be helpful to describe that, which can help defray some of those causes.
Right. Now, those survivors that were eligible for serious needs, based on the information they shared during their registration and where they were and their location of where their damage dwelling was, that type of assistance is not dependent on any type of insurance barrier there because of the type of assistance it's meant to be. It's meant to address those needs and just for care and feeding and things of that nature while you're trying to evacuate and stabilize yourself.
Yeah, exactly. That's one of the improvements that FEMA made this past March, where we've heard over the years where survivors say, you know, I was evacuated, I went and stayed on my Aunt Sally's couch, but she kicked me out after a while because I ate too much, right? And so that $770 is really designed just to help with any flexible cost that might even go towards just your immediate needs post evacuation. So it may not make you whole, but it's certainly something.
And I also have heard that these benefits are taxed. Essentially, you're going to get some sort of statement from the government, and you have to include it in your taxes in the following year, right?
I don't believe that's a good idea.
FEMA assistance is important.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Excellent. Okay, good. Well, we'll double check that, I guess, or if somebody does get different information later. But I'll tell you, this is that's good news. That's great news. I'm going to toss it back to Alisa. She has more questions. We're just going to keep them coming because there's so many questions.
I have a question. A lot of people are asking, because of the road closure between Topanga and the beach down to the 10, this is posing a serious impediment for our businesses who can't get business in, for our students who are commuting two to three hours each way, and for our workers who are trying to get to the west side for employment. Is there any FEMA or federal support or assistance to help with that road opening? We had a landslide earlier this year. It took a very long time to repair. I guess there's a strong request from the community for federal support, given the significant impacts of this issue.
That's outside of my program area.
Yeah. So I mean, that might be, I think SBA was next in the rotation, but that might be a good question for particularly, you mentioned businesses that might be impacted by those road closures and economic loss might be a good question for our partners at the Small Business Administration.
Okay. And so issues regarding like lost wages, lost business, inability to, that's all an SBA question, not a FEMA?
Well, now, under the disaster unemployment assistance that's been activated for this this county, you can file for that is meant to help those survivors who don't nor qualify for that type of assistance. So that can be a way of possibly offsetting some of those lost wages, but the economic loss for those independent business owners would be that SBA component.
That's wonderful. We're going to incorporate Garth soon for the SBA component. And then by 7:30, you have to get to get on to thanking our first responders. You guys, we have just so much to do. And this is amazing. All right. Just want to confirm quickly. The deadline to apply for FEMA is March 11? Or when is it?
March 10th.
March 10th. Okay, okay. So March 10th, everybody. Do not do March 11th. You do not want to lose out on the technicality. Okay. March 10th. Fabulous. Thank you. Good to know. And now this is the deadline to file like an application or register online or in person, right?
That's the current deadline.
Okay.
There may be a chance this is a very large disaster. There is a goal to get people registered immediately, as quickly as possible. But and and there may be a request by the state, and we work closely with the state. There may be further deadline extension of some kind, but we want to get people moving forward.
Okay. And just if you register, does that expire at any point? You have to worry about that?
No, FEMA program actually can potentially provide assistance up to 18 months from the date of declaration. So it doesn't truly expire. It's just the program will stop the financial funding part.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Wow. All right. These are just really, really good. Okay. So we have, let me see, let me see, let me see. There's so many questions. I want to pick one. Okay. So if you have somebody who has no insurance coverage at all, okay, and say they're a renter, due to just for whatever reason, they don't have insurance and they're a renter, but they were in a home that was significantly damaged, they may be displaced, what kind of benefits would they be benefits or qualified for those two pockets of benefits that Congressman Sherman alluded to earlier, the $43,600 for toward rebuilding, $43,600 for personal property? What would it look like for them, for renters with no insurance in a damaged home?
So the renters with no type of insurance involvement do have access to potential eligibility in both categories, housing assistance and other needs assistance. The difference in where the correction I want to make is they cannot receive home repair, because of course, it's not their responsibility repair. But as you mentioned in that example, they're not able to live there any longer. So now they have a temporary housing need. So where we provide help on our renters is helping them receive funding towards a temporary location until they can either find a new temporary rental or until they're able to get back in the rental that was damaged.
Okay.
Personal property side and other needs assistance, those categories are all the same for owners and renters. The only difference owners and renters that temporary housing, yes.
How long would it take for somebody with an uncomplicated situation? They don't have insurance, so it doesn't have to go through insurance. How long would it take from the day they file for that kind of aid to getting it, to receiving it?
Well, it does vary definitely based on how the number of registrations we have in there. But we have been seeing our registrants receiving funding from us within 24 to 48 hours. But it all depends on whether or not you have EFT as an option for receiving payment from us. That's definitely going to make it a lot faster because we send it directly to your bank account versus you having to track down an actual check in the postal mail. So anyone who has that as ability, I highly recommend it.
But we're really fortunate that FEMA has approved its transitional shelter assistance program for this disaster as well. And so when you register, you can be potentially eligible for that as well. FEMA will contact you. You don't have to specifically request that. And that can be fairly fast as well. So they kind of, there's also, we know there are a lot of people out there that have been staying and some donated resources such as the Airbnbs and some other things recently, right? And what we don't want to see happen is that somebody thinks they have a temporary solution for their their short-term sheltering needs. They talk to FEMA, FEMA says, do you have a place to stay? And they say, yes. Well, and then a week later, they're no longer able to say in the Airbnb a solution, right? So it's definitely better to make sure you register, talk to FEMA, see if you're eligible for that, because the TSA program can put you up in a hotel for a fairly like the period of time it takes some of those dollars that we mentioned earlier. So I just wanted to make sure we flagged that for you as well.
Excellent. Okay. So I want to make sure we have time for the SBA and Garth to give us his presentation and overview and just focus on the SBA a bit. So let's do that. But if you guys could hang tight and kick the circle back since there's so much overlap, that would be great.
Well, thank you, Vice President Carrier, Ms. Land. Thank you for having us. Also, we would like to thank SBA. We have a couple of team members here, too. But we would like to thank FEMA, our partner. We're kind of joined at the hip with FEMA. And of course, CALOES, the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. We've been working with them for years and years and years. I have myself, actually. So we thank them for joining. And we're a partner that that is part of the federal assistance. And the president acted very quickly for a rapid declaration on this presidential major declaration, these catastrophic fires that hit the Southern California, Los Angeles County area. And I'm very sorry for all the impacts that all your citizens here in the canyon have felt. It's a very disruptive type of disaster wildfires. Things are gone. Things that you never thought you'd lose are gone. So ultimately, I want to make it briefly, pretty brief on my comments because I have a few goals to suggest. And one of the major goals is, we would like to get everyone, if you're not yet registered with FEMA, we would like to suggest everybody that's impacted in LA County, register with FEMA by either going to disasterassistance.gov if you haven't done that, either calling 800-621-FEMA, 800-621-3362. I hope people can take a few notes because I'm going to give a couple more phone numbers and websites. Of course, everyone doesn't have cell coverage. Everyone doesn't have phones. Some people don't even have computers. But I want to make sure that we get assistance. We have a variety of disaster recovery centers. And when I say we, I mean, the federal and state partners have worked together. And FEMA is a great organization for logistics. They're the lead federal coordinating agency when a president makes a declaration. And they are incredible at getting things moved around and set up. And we thank them for bringing us along, basically. CALOES is a great organization, very hands-on, and very concerned about the citizens that live in this state, and so is the mayor's office. I've been amazed on the CIRC group, Community Emergency Group, and they have so many initiatives. It's very impressive. The one thing I'll say, I'm going to get to the SBA programs, of course, the biggest thing that we want people to do is register with FEMA and look at whatever grants you might be eligible for. Temporary housing, they do fantastic with setting people up to get a roof over their head, some emergency cash, maybe some minor repairs if their house isn't hit bad. There is straight line winds besides the wildfires that was impacting people. As we all know, the fires hot from house to house, and some neighbor might be have a house that's completely debilitated with smoke smell, but they're they're not burned. There are a variety of damage levels that are impacted in this disaster, whether in Malibu or whether in Altadena. So we are working as a team all over the county with disaster recovery centers, SBA business recovery centers, and we are working with disaster loan outreach centers. You'll see a variety of acronyms people might accidentally use. We have centers throughout the county in various places as close, trying to be where we can get near those survivors that are impacted. So to the program specifics, the one thing I would recommend as far as writing down is if you want to get some information and understand what kind of federal assistance through the SBAs available, I would recommend going to www.sba.gov/disaster. That's a landing page. You can get information. You can apply right there. You can call our 800 customer service number at 800-659-2955. Again, that's 1-800-659-2955. You can ask questions about the program. You can ask questions where the centers are, where FEMA and SBA are. You can ask questions. I'm a business owner, and I know I can't really apply with FEMA, but I want to go to SBA, a quiet center that is a little more private. Business owners can go to those business recovery centers. So those are key things to know. But the key, the most important thing is do not hesitate to apply for FEMA, to file your claim with your insurance if you have some. We cover anything that's under underinsured or uninsured. We can try to make individual homeowners, and and again, we're the U.S. Small Business Administration. We try to help homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes, of course, and private nonprofit organizations get as close to pre-disaster condition as possible with our loan, low interest loans. These are really low interest direct loans from the federal government. They're subsidized because this is a government program since the 50s to help individuals and businesses impacted by disasters. So the interest rate for most homeowners and renters on this specific declaration would be a fixed rate of 2.563, up to 30-year term. Most businesses, 4% flat rate, fixed rate. Most nonprofits, and these are generally private nonprofits, not government-owned or, you know, city-owned or anything like that, 3.65%. Terms up to 30 years in most cases. If there's no prepayment penalty for any of this money, there's no cost to apply, there's no obligation to accept any money or the loan itself, there's no decision that you have to take the money immediately. You control the survivors, you're I would, I would probably be making a mistake when I say the Topangans, Topangans in the valley or the Topangan, you know, citizens. And I'm sorry, I kind of stepped on that name. But bottom line is, you decide if you take funds from SBA, of course, people would love to get some grant money. And we communicate with FEMA about how much grant money has been given for certain specific things. We loan for certain specific things. It might be an automobile for personal homeowner or resident. It might be for repairing a primary resident residence home. It might be for repairing a business rental that one individual had from their parents' house. They ran it out and they want to get a tenant back in there. They can borrow as a business owner that's in the business of land as being a landlord. They can borrow to rebuild that rental property. These loans are up to $500,000 for homeowners and renters to repair and replace their personal property, I mean, their their primary residence, up to $500,000. That's over and above what they might have got for insurance. Some of the houses are worth a lot of money, you know, out in the Palisades area. Some of the houses in Altadena might have mortgage. They might have a little need, a big need. If the house is gone, then they have a big need. It's the most catastrophic thing that has probably happened to most people's lives. And it takes time to recover. It is, as was mentioned by FEMA, this is a marathon. It's not a sprint. Take care of your family. Take care of yourselves. The the great thing that I see in these disasters is communities come together and help each other. The disasters start local and they end local. We're going to be here for a long time. Our centers are going to be open. We're going to be helping people. But the goal for SBA at all the centers is we have great customer service staff members that are patient, and they will help you walk through the loan application. You can also have their, you know, name as you talk to them face to face. They'll ask you questions. They'll walk you step by step through our pretty overwhelming detailed fact sheet. It's green in most facilities. It says SBA, but it has a lot of numbers and definitions. We have flyers that help you. I'm going to read a couple important things of the homeowners and renters, and this also applies to businesses and nonprofits. Low fixed interest rates with terms up to 30 years. No payment or no interest for 12 months. No interest accrues. Once you get the first disbursement, and many times they're dispersed like a reconstruction Once you get the first disbursement, and many times they're dispersed like a reconstruction loan, like a mortgage when you're building a house and you need to get the project going and you got some money initially up to a certain limit before we even consider if there's collateral needed. We do expect these loans to be repaid. A common misconception is, well, the loans at the pandemic, the PPP program for businesses were forgiven. That was a special provision passed by Congress. These loans are from the Treasury. The Treasury will ask you to keep repaying them. So our goal is to not put any survivor, any homeowner, renter, or business in a loan they're not going to be successful in. But the unique thing that we can do when we're approving a loan is we're not a credit score-driven loan. We're, we look at the ability to make a payment that fits in an individual's budget over and above their existing debts. We look at their credit scores for their debts. We look at their tax returns for their income. One thing we do is we look at businesses that what they were doing before the disaster. Banks really don't do that. If you're closed and you're not, don't have any income, they're going to say, well, give us a call when you reopen, if you reopen, and we can look at maybe trying to loan you some funds. This is a different program. It's a direct federal loan. So I could go on for a long time, but what I want everyone to remember is any questions, call 800-659-2955. Go to sba.gov/disaster. Relax. Take a little time and read about the loan programs. Businesses can get up to $2 million as well as nonprofits. Now, remember, these are up to, somebody might borrow $5,000. A homeowner might borrow $500,000 or they might borrow $50,000. Whatever their insurance paid for and they get proceeds for, we can't duplicate that, just like FEMA. We look at what FEMA didn't get, wasn't able to give to an individual in the form of grants that don't need to be repaid. And then we decide, well, we have to adjust the loan eligibility amount because FEMA got money for a car or specific things. So it's a little complicated, but you don't have to wait. And what I highly recommend for all the survivors, there's 250 or 60 people here tonight on this call. Take the steps forward. Go to the recovery center. Talk to individuals. Talk to the county. Get your license fixed. Get your things you've lost. Get your registration from DMV. Get your disaster unemployment filled out for your employees. Help them make sure they know. Go to the centers and tell your, the EDD department folks that are there that disaster unemployment assistance is a benefit because we're closed. Some owners might want to pay their employees to clean. So anyway, I'm going to stop there and I have a question from Ms. Carrier. And then I'll go on from there.
Thank you so much. Okay, so Garth, yes, you've been wonderful. Thank you. I think I will reach out to you directly when I have questions in the future. So I've got your email. Oops, no escape. But here we go. It's the hybrid question for FEMA and SBA. I don't know who wants to take it, but basically, one of the questions that keeps coming up in the community is, who would help with if either of you, people who have experienced lost wages or lost business because of the road closure, the mandatory road closures and the evacuations related to the mandatory evacuation? How would you apply for that?
I'll take that one right off the bat. And we already addressed, both of us kind of addressed the unemployment, disaster unemployment assistance for employees. There's also economic injury disaster loans for business owners. Those could be home-based business. Now, those are for business owners. They could be a sole proprietor. They could be a gig worker. They could be a landscaper and they may not be able to do any landscaping because the landscaping is all gone. They might have no income. They can pursue a low-interest loan. And if they were able to make payments before the disaster for a small debt of their needs to meet their needs, then they may be able to get, they may be eligible and approved to get economic injury funds. They can use those working capital dollars. They might have spent money to already repair a piece of equipment. They may have spent money to clean out their, you know, to a house that wasn't completely destroyed. They may, are already paid for smoke damage repairs. They may have done things and spent money and we can replace that money in the form of loans because they have a loss. We're going to have loss verification people. We call them loss verifiers. FEMA calls them inspectors to reach out to the individual applicants and survivors that registered and find out, what did you lose? What size is your house? We have information. We've looked online. We look at the records. What are your needs? Do you have a working bathroom? Do you have anything? Those are immediate needs. And then our money from the SBA is more considered longer-term recovery and rebuilding funds from the federal government. And so, but you want to keep your options open and we can get you money before your insurance claim is even figured out and settled. You might want to hire a landscaper to, you know, a private, as was mentioned earlier, a private soil person and engineer to evaluate cleaning your lot so you can get prepared to ask for a permit to rebuild. There are a lot of things that you can ask for. Don't hesitate to ask. Don't hesitate to apply. And then you'll be assigned a loan officer. Express what you're trying to accomplish. Some people may ask, can I relocate out of this hazard area? Now, of course, we're here with our funds to try to help Los Angeles County become whole again. The city of Topanga, the city of Santa Monica, the city of Malibu. We're here in Altadena to try to help people recover and rebuild and rebuild their community as well. But some people are of an age or a situation where they need to move near a son or daughter out of state. We can potentially help them with a relocation loan instead of using your insurance money and your SBA loan to rebuild that property. You may have to sell eventually the lot that you own, but you may move in or move next door to your daughter or son in another place because this has been a catastrophic event. So there are many nuances to this. The key is apply. Don't consider yourself ineligible to afford a loan. We're going to try to make a loan that fits within your budget. And you take money that you want and need to immediately meet your needs. And you don't have to borrow more than you want. And it can be paid off right away if you want. If suddenly you realize you got all the insurance money you need. So there's a lot of nuances, but apply, apply, apply. Apply with your FEMA, for your FEMA registration number and grant money that you don't have to pay back. Immediately start applying for SBA and file your claim.
Understood. Okay, Garth, fabulous. Really wonderful. We will be reaching out again. Feel free to send me any documents you want me to disseminate or distribute to the community. But really good. You've given a lot of great examples and even bringing up that relocation example. Really good. Unfortunately, we have so much to cover tonight. So you want to hang around for a little bit? If somebody pops up with another question?
I'm here as long as there's questions and you have the screen on, I'll be on.
Check the chat. Okay. Okay, also, there are questions. Alisa wanted me to mention to you that she's directing questions your way via the chat box. So if either you, FEMA and SBA, so if you guys want, that's something you could look at while we're dealing with other questions. And that way you could manually answer questions that participants are sending to you during this webinar.
And I'll add, if you want to capture the chat messaging and you want to follow up with our office, we have teams, not just me. We have teams of people here and we have teams of people in Sacramento that can try to answer the questions to the best of our ability and then you can get them out to your citizens. But we'll do everything we can to answer questions on the spot now.
Okay, perfect. All right, Garth, thank you. Okay, so we have to do schools because we had to skip over them earlier. So we just want to get a quick update from Allison Holzner about what people can do if their school is damaged or closed, how to handle that over the next couple of weeks and months. And then we will go to our first responders. Okay, thank you, guys. Terrific. Terrific, all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. And as a survivor myself, a Palisadesian who lives in the alphabets, whose house is leveled, this has been very informative. I appreciate that. First, I want to say on January 5th, the district did plan in advance of caution because of the strong winds to relocate to Topanga at Woodland Hills. And we're very happy we did that on Tuesday. Right now, Topanga Elementary will remain closed until Monday because there's more red flag warnings. So that's Topanga. We are having a district-led town hall tomorrow, Carrie. And if you don't have that information to disseminate to your community, I will get it to you and you can send it out. It's at 6 o'clock tomorrow. I'll send it to you. As you know, Pali High, Pali High was damaged significantly. I've been working hand-in-hand in our office and the district with Dr. McGee to work on a temporary location that we're closing in on. So right now they're Zoom. We are hopeful because they managed to keep 50 to 70% of the campus intact. Thank you firefighters, that we are hoping, hoping, hoping to reopen in fall of 2025. And that's a hope. There's a lot of variables there. Revere, Nick and I and the soup were there today. It looks spotless. They worked OEHS with our office and a lot of other environmental experts worked to reopen. And we had very strong enrollment there. Pali Elementary, as you know, was significantly damaged and not usable for this year. We were so fortunate to be able to relocate Pali Elementary on Brentwood Sciences Campus intact with Principal Herman, every single teacher. And Brentwood Science moved to a different wing of the school. So their teachers are so accommodating. And we did that last Wednesday. The kids and the faculty have been phenomenal. Marquez Elementary has moved completely intact with their principal over to Norris Derry, which is right in West LA. And we're very proud of that as well. That is really the school updates at the moment. And I know for many families who've reached out, they want to know about evacuation, et cetera. I will tell you, I was fortunate enough to be working from home because I was in a car accident the day before on Monday. Saw the smoke. We evacuated Pali Elementary and Marquez and Revere within an hour and a half. So, and we were fortunate that Pali High was not in school yet. So that's how we handled that. And I definitely, we're getting a lot of feedback from parents about how they'd like Topanga to be evacuated and our protocols and we'll work on that tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, A+ for that speed. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Chief speak to transportation.
Yeah.
Those schools.
Okay.
Given the road closure.
So one just quick question, actually, does the transportation issue, is there anything you want to mention about that? Is that impacted to the school? How is that being managed?
We are managing transportation for Palisades Elementary students to go to Brentwood Science and also for Marquez to go to Norris Derry. That's your question. And I'm happy to give more of those logistics at tomorrow night's meeting because I know you have a jam-packed agenda. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Auburn Bear in town.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So on to our first responders. Okay, so we've got, I think we've got Drew. Do we have Megan? We've got Deputy Baldi. We have Officer Sturgis. And I'm not sure if we still have Captain C2, but I saw her earlier. And I mean, first of all, just humongous round of applause, everybody, wherever you are, stop. And I mean, please thank these people. Like, makes me tear up. I just, these people show up month after month. And they really participate in these meetings and they just are showing hands on with the community. But I just, I know things are rough right now for a lot of people, but I feel very protective of these folks. Like, they have really, really done a bang-out job. Nothing's perfect. These are some crazy fires that we haven't seen before, but I have no doubt that these people threw everything they had at it and then stopped. So I just want to say, thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Alisa because I am not a pretty crier. So Alisa, can you say a few words?
Yeah, we're incredibly grateful to everybody who's been extraordinary. I think we just want to have a moment where we can have a briefing from our team here. Shall we hand it off to Drew? Can you speak to us?
So, well, good evening. And Captain C2 is on. So maybe she's having some challenges here. I know you might have wanted to get to her. But she manages her Zoom struggles, but I can start. So I just wanted to start and say, thank you so much to the Topanga community. Your heartfelt thanks and your commitment to Fire Station 69 in the Los Angeles County Fire Department does not go unnoticed. We are so appreciative to all the support that you've given us. And I'll be right there with Carrie. I'm not a good crier either. And it's been, it's very well received and your Los Angeles County Fire Department and your Fire Station 69 Topanga firefighters truly appreciate it. Just to give you up-to-date where we're at with the Palisades fire, we're at 68% containment. We're at 23,448 acres. And we still have 4,237 personnel assigned. So your firefighters are still assisting and engaged in this. I know that there's been a lot of traffic that's gone around through the Topanga community and throughout the region. A lot of time and energy on this fire makes it come to a conclusion with the relative risk. We're still in a red flag. We still have some significant vulnerabilities to Topanga Canyon. And so we just need to make it really till we get some more favorable climatology. It looks like we're going to get some precipitation going into the weekend, which is really going to be favorable to the wildfire risk and threat. We have been using unmanned aircraft now to look at heat signatures within the fire area. And I'll just talk focused on what is I'm responsible for in Division 7. And that goes from Coastline Drive on Pacific Coast Highway all the way west to West Lake Village. So everything in that fire footprint that I'm looking at is we're using unmanned aircraft. So see if there's any heat signatures that we can go and get to and mitigate. And that has been going on daily within the area. And with that being said, it looks like for how the Palisades is going is it is going to be handed back to myself with a transition plan back to myself on Tuesday or Wednesday. And so what does that look like? We know that we have a occupant support component that we need to maintain. So we'll have an augmented staffing component to meet that need. We're also planning for sandbagging. So I'm looking right now so we can have points of distribution because, as you know, Fire Station 69 can only have so much sand and so much sandbags based upon the size of our station. So I'm looking at opportunities. One of those I'm thinking might be the community center that we can put sand and sandbags so we have a point of distribution for sand. So that's something we're still looking at, of course, based upon approvals with everybody. So I want to make it to where people that have a sandbag need, they have the least amount of travel. They have the most amount of efficiency. And so that's one of those areas that I'm looking at right now is possibly put it at the community center. With that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions for me. So I've been on this fire within the first 30 minutes of the start of this fire and I haven't quit yet. So I'm in it for the long haul. And even after the big machine goes away, I will still be here. So with that, is there any questions that anybody may have that I can answer? Any questions? Yes, Alisa?
So Drew, yeah, I just want to reiterate, you know, our gratitude is beyond words. I do want to share from some of those who lost their homes have posted in the chat their experience. And I just want to ask you to comment on that because I'm hearing this from a lot of community members. Really, the concern was for some of the people in the, for us, the Tuna and Saddle Peak area. You know, there was an interval of time in that first, I don't know, 24, 38, 36 hours where there were homes actively burning. I have a neighbor here who's stating he made multiple 911 calls and, you know, nobody was picking up the phone. And I think people just felt abandoned. I'm sure there's a reason for why it went down that way. But can you comment on that window of time for those who've had those terrible losses?
Right. So just, right. So I was up well before the fire got up to Saddle Peak and through Tuna. I can say that when the fire got into Topanga Canyon the first night, it crossed at the Two Mile Bridge. By 1:00 in the morning, it was By one o'clock in the morning, it was at the S curves and it was transitioning up to and through tuna to Saddle Peak to Las Flores. And it got uh through tuna canyon-ish around uh one thirty two in the morning to my recollection. And I, and I was up there the whole time. Um, we did have engines up there. I can know this is factual because I was commanding them. They had their hands full up there on a firefight. They also had calls for service. Uh, meaning that those nine one one calls to help evacuate, they were putting people in the fire engines. Uh, because some people chose not to evacuate and evacuation orders were launched very early for this fire with ample time. And um, so a lot of your firefighters that were up there in that operational area to combat structured defense mission um actually had to go into life safety mode for people on the road system in their cars that chose to stay um until the last minute and now ran out of options. So there was a lot of that going on. So I heard the same thing that there was a sense of abandonment. But I can tell you that we did not abandon you. What we did is um, there's only so many resources we have. And when we have to have a um a different task in a life safety mission rather than do a structured defense mission, that takes the priority. Um, but I did feel a lot of that. I was at Fire Station sixty nine every day um up to today. And the reason I wasn't there today because I was um engaged in helping with the, the Hughes fire. But I'd never left our area, meaning Topanga area or the Santa Monica Mountains. So I'm, I, I understand the frustration because you think that you have a local fire station right at uh your um there at Fernwood. And you would think that they would be there, which they were. Engine two sixty nine was up in there and they actually ended up and they got chased out at Skyhawk and, and Tuna Canyon. Um, so I understand that and I, I could go really a long ways with this, Lisa, on, on what the firefighting efforts were and what our challenges were. And, and the biggest challenge was um, the fire effects and the amount of winds. Everybody knows that wind speeds were recorded over eighty miles an hour. I was up there at, at sixty nine Bravo and the wind meter pegged out at ninety nine miles an hour. It was just, it was a um very forceful fire event. And I'll be glad to if we do, which I hope we will. I'd like to organize something later to go and, and have a community meeting where we can all get together and and talk and, and do some sense making really of this whole thing.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Drew. And I think it really speaks to, um, and I want to just reiterate the, the very low loss of life was an extraordinary achievement for this large of a fire moving under those conditions. And we really, you know, that, that we survive, most of us with our animals is extraordinary. But it really highlights how important it is for folks to get out of the way quickly because then that becomes a conflict between life and property. So thanks for sharing that.
Thing I'd like to say, and a lot of that is the commitment of the community. If, I mean, I've been as your assistant fire chief for five years, but I've been involved in the wildfire preparedness in the Topanga community for over twenty, talking about this. And to the great efforts of the Topanga community on that preparedness. It, it does play volumes. It really does on the life safety mission. And, and the practicing that we've done, we've done the live evacuations, we've done it virtually. I mean, we've done it all with the community interactions and involvement. So that messaging is there. And when we have a fire like that, I mean, this is when we all train and what we've been there at those training sessions for and the information set uh sessions we've been at. We were all forced to take action. And for the residents of Topanga, and I know it's an inconvenience, is to evacuate. And it's for us to go in there and actually do the best that we actually can with the resources we have on hand. This was a fire of different proportion that we've ever seen.
Thank you. I have a question here, which is uh, is there a need for temporary Topanga housing for firefighters in the area? One of our residents is asking.
Um, no. So Fire Station sixty nine, yeah, man, if you've been in Topanga, it is the hub. And the community support, I mean, I think all of our firefighters are going to have to go on Weight Watchers after this with all the uh community support that we've had uh with all the food. It's just been phenomenal. Um, so we are doing good. One thing that we're going to look to doing is actually, we did have some damage at Fire Station sixty nine because of the winds and all the traffic and everything. So, but your firefighters are proud and they're doing just fine. And I really appreciate um the residents, whoever offered that. Uh, thank you so much, but we're, we're going to be just fine. So thank you so much.
Well, Drew, thank you, you know, from the bottom of our heart. We want to kind of uh ask Officer Sturgis if, if he could give a report. Um, we ready for that?
Report or just a, just a couple, say a couple of words about his experience.
Yeah. Officer Sturgis, and we've also had a few questions about curfew and understanding road closures and folks uh struggling. We have a, a large private school, uh Manzanita, and about a third of their students cannot access the school when the road is closed. And so we're having these kind of challenges. Can you comment on from your perspective?
Uh, yeah. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to start off by thanking the community for their support. Uh, it's really, really helped us uh get through what we're doing over here. Also want to thank the firefighters. I mean, it was an incredible defense of Topanga. So that, it was incredible to see. Um, so as far as those issues go with, with the closures, um, right now, the sheriff's department, they're the ones that are running the closures uh throughout Topanga. Given that over to them, we were manning some closures, but we've had to shift resources um to the Eaton Fire. Uh, because at one point for the Eaton Fire, they had, CHP was holding fifty one closures over there compared to the eight we had here. Um, so we did have to shift some resources. Um, so the sheriff's department is holding the closures. And then for red flag days when they close Topanga, uh, the sheriff's department is actually doing that as well. Um, issue with the schools, um, I did receive a email um about when Topanga's closed. I know that some of the students from the schools go into Woodland Hills and they were wondering about getting into Topanga when there's a closure and how they might do that because their driver's not a resident, resident only closure. Um, so they wanted to see if there was a way to get an access card for them so they can go in. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up. Um, confusion with the curfew and stuff like that. Uh, so evacuation order and evacuation warning zones uh are subject to curfew. So if your zone has been cleared and it is now normal, it is not subject to curfew. And then I know there's that additional confusion because on red flag days, which right now it's closed to residence only. So they're also checking IDs and wondering if curfew applies to that. So no, it, even though Topanga's closed residence only, um, the curfew only applies to the evacuation order and the evacuation warning zones. Um, I did go out during the meeting and I, I spoke to someone about the reopening of Topanga between Grandview and PCH. Uh, it's not going to be an answer you want to hear, but we don't have a current timeline on that. So I saw a lot of those questions in the chat and I just want to say there's no current timeline and when that's going to reopen. I've been through the area. Uh, there's numerous down power lines and utility lines and rock slides and
And Cody, not to jump in, but just so you know, SCE is actually on Caltrans and SCE. So they'll speak to that. Don't worry about updating that too much.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I just want to go into some of the things that we did. And that was we, once this started happening, we got put on twelve and a half hour shifts. Uh, so eight hundred officers were deployed um across Southern California uh to assist with the fires. And that includes officers with our special response team. Now, and our goal was to secure and protect evacuated areas uh through closures, crime suppression and looting prevention. And I think we were able to do a pretty good job with that, but we did run into some issues um at the closures. And one of them being uh people, including a resident, uh showed up with forged press passes. So we had multiple arrests too uh with people that had forged documents. They took the LA County Sheriff's press pass and they applied their picture to it. And that, that is considered a misdemeanor or felony. It's considered a wobbler. Um, so we want people to avoid doing that. I know that people were eager to get back to their homes. Now, some people are doing it for nefarious means and some people are just trying to get back to their homes. But at the end of the day, that i- it is a crime and they have filed charges on those two people. So the DA's office is taking stuff like that very seriously. So I just want to warn the community, especially for the future, that don't try something like that uh to get back to your house because it, it can lead to legal consequences.
Hey, Cody, I'm just going to jump in quickly. I want, I, I want to say thank you, but I also just looked at the time and we're in a different location today. And they will close us at eight. And so I have to very unceremoniously again, but I want you to finish your sentence. I have to make sure we get Captain C two and Deputy Baldi, and then I have to go to the SCE and Caltrans because we only have ten minutes.
Okay. Um, yeah. So we, I'll save the rest of that for when we have another meeting in the future and we have more time to discuss as a community. Uh, main thing is going to be, we do California Highway Patrol. We do our traffic updates on X. Um, so you can follow our office on X at CHP West Valley and that, I current list of closures um and information such as evacuations and links for that kind of thing. Um, posted that stuff as it came in and yeah, just make sure to follow X if you're looking for current updated information.
All right. You start next time. Hold me to that. Thank you, Cody. All right, Captain C two, um, I, if you're still on, oh my goodness. That is amazing stamina, but we would expect no less. So if you wanted to say a few words, we'd love it. Okay. I think you jumped off. Deputy Baldi, are you on? If you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear it.
The captain's there. Uh, Carrie, Captain C two's there.
Okay, then we'll just check. We're having just like a little bit of a glitch. So just give us a minute um to see if we can get her unmuted and into speaker mode. Captain C two, bear with us. We appreciate you so much. When we see Deputy Baldi. Okay. So we've sent a signal or message to you, Captain C two, asking you to unmute. And it should be lower left hand corner of your screen. All right. Do we want, well, while she's working on that, Deputy Baldi, do you want to say a few things or a key part of the team?
Hello. Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, well, Captain C two is trying to log back on or fix it. Uh, so I did work one of those closures and I just uh wanted to throw out there. Please update your licenses and get the, or the Topanga access cards. Um, I can't tell you how many people don't have their current address on their license that we're trying to get back into Topanga. And it just um delays the process uh or they may not even be able to get back in. So um, update your licenses. It'll make it easier. And I think I only saw like two Topanga access cards. So I don't know if people just aren't getting them or what, but yeah. So that's just from my perspective of actually working one of the, the roadblocks. Um, also, um, people know that it is essential workers only. We had a lot of like landscapers, uh, construction workers, uh, that type of people trying to come up into the canyon. So just know if it is red flag and we have the soft closure, they're not going to be allowed in um unfortunately.
Great. Thank you. All right. Deputy Baldi, as always concise and just spot on. Thank you again to our perfect attendance record. Um, okay. And Captain C two, if she's not back yet, she may have stepped away to give the restroom or something. If she comes back, we will put her right on. But I wanted to go ahead and segue to Caltrans and SCE so we can get that information. And you just beg the facility maintenance team to give us five minutes. Um, okay. Caltrans, Road Access, Lauren, are you there?
I am. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to appreciate the Topanga community as always for supporting Caltrans. We are here to um make sure that you are safe. We did implement the um soft closure in advance of all of these PSPS and of course now Firestorm. Um, as you know, um, I believe the CHP officer talked about the closure, the soft closure of Mulholland down to Grandview because of the work that SCE is doing. Um, and some debris slides we have between Grandview and PCH, we have a hard closure there. So as Deputy Baldi pointed out, people aren't getting in and out in that section. Um, obviously nobody's checking IDs there because nobody's getting in and out. Um, but we are here to support SCE. A couple of the speakers have um commented on the number of poles and lines that are down. Those have to be removed. We can't even get our contractors in there until they're so we are here in partnership with SCE and I will do things as quickly and as expediently and as safely as we can. That's my report. I don't know if you want to take questions or you want to go to Leah.
Uh, we'll go to Leah and then we, if we have questions, we'll follow up with them and send them to you later because we unfortunately are running out of time. Leah, are you able to say a few words about the SCE work being done? And how long it might take? And how quickly it might possibly be done? Do we have, if she's, she may have stepped away. So I guess we could take a question then while we're waiting for her to come back on if somebody wants to ask, but um, it's always about time, right? Like how long is it going to be? And, and when we can get a signal or some sort of indication about when there might be more act up? Do you want to take that, Lauren?
Oh, I thought you were just making a statement. Yeah, it really is. It depends on when they can get in there. Um, there is an encroachment permit, permit process uh because they are working on the state right of way. I know um in talking with Leah that she is applying for that. So we've obviously will fast track that. Um, but I don't know how long it's going to take for SCE to do their work. Um, and as I indicated, we will support them, um, but we can't get in there. Leah, there you are. I'll let you respond.
Yay. Awesome. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Leah.
Uh, Carrie, just so you know, I think Captain C two has her, her computer figured out.
The interference I'm hearing. Okay. Captain C two, did you want to say a few words? Um, or Leah, Leah or Captain C two, Leah, are you on? Okay. And Captain C two, I, can you say a few words? We want to hear from you, our wonderful sheriff's captain. Okay. All right.
She needs to be a panelist. She needs to be a panelist. Her hand is raised, but she needs to be a panelist in order to take her.
Captain C two, you're on. Just try speaking and see if you
I can, you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we hear you.
Oh my gosh, I'm so excited. Okay. Um, I don't know how to change my video, but good enough because I know we're out for time. So um, I'm going to hurry. The first thing I would just want to say real quick is um, when the fire first came out, Chief Drew Smith and I drove down and met at Will Rogers. And as it started progressing, we were seeing people walking with suitcases, having to leave their car. And it was like that moment, I just remember looking at Drew, we're looking at each other. We're like, oh my gosh, this is why we do what we do. This is why we take those steps and make residence only on Topanga Canyon and really recommend, you know, Topanga Elementary being closed. And I just really want to thank you for your partnership because it's about keeping our community safe. And that was Drew's and I like validation. Every step that we're taking is because we truly love you guys and we want to keep you safe. So thank you for partnering with us on that. I just wanted to correct a couple of things. So for the curfews, it's only if it's a evacuation order. So evac ordered, evac warnings are not under curfews. Okay? And then um, I saw some of the, the questions in there about um, uh, you know, uh, the Topanga Elementary, we only make red recommendation. You know, the Topanga Elementary, we only make red recommendations during red flags. And I'm glad that Topanga Elementary actually partners with us on that. There was a comment that they didn't see anybody at the red flag road closures that we typically have. I promise you, there are six deputies out there that are at Topanga Canyon as well as Old Topanga. And then we want to start thinking about mudslides right now, right? So this, to the time, it's just start thinking about mudslides and having a plan. And I know Chief Drew Smith and the Fire Department has sand and really starting to prepare the communities. So I'm here if you guys have any questions. I don't have a date of when Topanga Canyon, PCH will be open. Full access open, but I can tell you this, they are working really hard to get that open. But we got to do it in a very safe manner. So we're working hard at it and I'm always here for you guys. I try to visit the library, come by and see you guys. If you ever need me, most of you guys have my cell phone number.
Thank you, Captain C two. And I want to take a moment just for a shout out for your partnership and the seamless way you work with TSEP and Arson Watch. That, the way that you've integrated them and they've worked with you has brought, this sort of has really leveled up. I would say the preparedness, emergency preparedness mindset in Topanga. And I'd like to think it has helped us escape. One too many close calls, but we have escaped and I think that's because of the work you do with organizations like TSEP, James Grasso, Scott Ferguson and all those members. Arson Watch, I want to shout out Lee Carey, excuse me, Will Carey and Lisa Statement, phenomenal people all around, everybody. And their part in my mind of our first responders team. So thank you to all of you.
Absolutely, and I just want to say one more thing. When the community partners with government, that's actually where the magic happens. And I can't thank our, what, Community Fire Brigade, our Volunteers on Patrol, Arson Watch, TSEP. Just really everyone that's come together, worked with government because that's where the magic happens. So thank you for that.
I like the way you put that, where the magic happens. We're going to quote you on that. Okay, Leah, are you up? Did you want to try unmuting bottom left-hand screen and give it a shot? Lee Torres. Okay, we see you. You're primed to speak, but there must be some sort of an issue maybe with the microphone on your end. So while you're trying to work on that, we'll have Roger say a few words and then we're going to get kicked out of here really soon. So Roger, did you want to say a few words?
No, not really. I think that this is a great meeting. I think that. I have to echo every single thing that you've said about every one of the responders. And everybody who pitched together and worked to make, keep us all safe. Thank God, on Old Topanga Canyon Road where I live, the fire did not come up our way. And we're blessed, we feel blessed about that. And we just need to. Stay with it and I think that's, that's really it. I think that the two most important things. One is the road itself and I know there's a lot of work that's going to have to happen before we can open up the scenic highway. But we need to stay on top of that and. I think that's it for now.
Got it. Okay, James, I hope you're still on because we cannot close this out without hearing from you, our TSEP wonderkin.
I would just say thank you to everyone because I know we lost a lot of homes in Topanga, but a lot of homes were saved as well. And when I look at the map of the Santa Monica Mountains and I look from the four oh five. The Canaan Dune, we're the last biggest piece of green in those Santa Monica Mountains and for that, we're thankful. Of course, be considerate of those who did not make it through this particular one. And we still have a lot of high winds. There's high winds tonight and into tomorrow. And so we need to get to that rain. And I look forward to that day. And thank you to everyone who's done so much for Topanga. The generosity's been overwhelming.
Thank you, thank you, James. We, we, we see you. We are so grateful for you and thank you for coming tonight. Okay, so Leah, I wanted to give you one more chance to chime in if you want. But if not, I was just going to do a quick recap of the meetings that are coming up. Okay, I'll do that. Just raise your hand if you want to talk. But just to remind people, so apparently tomorrow, there's a meeting that the school is holding to give parents latest scoop on all of the school opening closures.
Six PM LA.
Okay, it's a six PM meeting and Alisa. LA USC, Alisa is going to send something out to the chat. And people can get that or you can reach out to Allison Holendorf directly. And then on Sunday, there is a town hall that Lindsay Horvath mentioned, Supervisor Horvath, about debris cleanup. And how you can avail yourselves of those resources, some of which apparently are free. So if it's free, it's for me. I suggest everybody show up and see what we can do. And we will, we will push out information on that if we get a flyer.
Three to five PM.
A Horvath event at three to five PM on Sunday. And again, we'll push out the information when we get it. We don't have it yet.
And then Saturday, Saturday at the Topanga Community Center. Eleven AM to four PM, a number of our important agencies, FEMA, SBA and others will be there to meet individually with affected residents. And we're grateful to the community center for collaborating in this important event. So please come, there'll be food and other ways for the community connect. And also meet these important agencies, eleven to four at the community center on Saturday.
Maybe you can meet Garth in person. All right, all right, everybody. Thank you. We love you. We believe in this community and we're here because of you. So thank you. Good night. Stay safe.